Everyone please stand and join me in the plat- to our platform.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Board Secretary, has this meeting been advertised in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act?
Mr. Board President, yes it has.
Roll call please.
Mr. Bunka, present. Mrs. Backham, here. Mr. Rashada, present. Mr. Brodzinski, Mr. Saye.
Half of us is.
Mrs. DePinto, present. Mrs. Rakuya, present. Mrs. Trapp, present. Mr. McEnam, present.
Doctor Alfano, we have a presentation. Kathleen, please come up to the podium and explain the presentation.
Good evening. Thank you for attending our fourth annual Left the Children League program. My name is Mr. Gentile and I am the District Supervisor of Humanities. Doctor Alfano, our superintendent, proposed this idea a few years ago and Ms. Mar- Ms. Brady and I have been implement- implementing it. We are attempting to give our fourth- our fifth graders a taste of civics by allowing them to be representative of the Cerebral Board of Education and school's administration for an evening. We hope this exercise becomes a means for curiosity and future explorations of our government and community.
Doctor Alfano, please review the superintendent's report with the board. Section A, Buildings and Grants. Number one, to approve the use of the Cerebral War Memorial High School gymnasium for a Cerebral AA girls softball training camp. Are there any questions with section A? Hearing none, we move to section B, Finance. Number one, to improve the list of bills dated March 2013. Number two, to approve the abolishment of a ten-month support secretary at the Samso upper elementary school. Number three, to approve the creation of a part-time, twenty-nine point five hours a week support secretary at the Samso upper elementary school. Number four, to approve retroactively the place of an eighth grade non-classified student. Number five, to approve the proposed tentative budget for fiscal year 2013-2014. Mr. DeAngelo, please explain this.
This is our budget for the 2000-2014 year school budget that we prepared in conjunction with the Finance Committee Administration.
Number six, the Board of Education is requested to set board meeting dates as listed below. Number seven, to approve the attendance of Marilyn Zyknar-Szetyak Assistant Superintendent at the NJA FPA conference. Any questions with section B? If none.
I have a question. Is the fifteen thousand three hundred dollars the pro-rated amount or the yearly amount? It's a yearly amount. It's item number four. It's a yearly amount?
Yes.
And question number five. Mr. DeAngelo, would you please explain what the special revenue amount present- represents?
The special revenue is money given by the government. It must be used for a very specific purpose. Usually written by a grant.
Thank you. I have a question. In the budget, where does the special revenue come from?
It's by this date for a specific purpose.
Thank you.
Moving to section C, Personnel Non-Certified. Number one, budget nations. Number two, unpaid medical needs. Number three, to approve the employment of the individuals listed below. Number four, to approve the employment of the following personnel as listed below. Approved substitute as listed below. Any questions? Moving on to section D, Personnel Certified. Number one, the Board of Education is requested to honor the retirement of Janet Mahoney, grade one teacher at the Wilson Elementary School. Number two, to grant an extension to a child rearing leave. Number three, to grant an extension to a child rearing leave. Number four, to grant an extension to a child rearing leave. Number five, to approve retroactively the following staff members as advisors for the Cerebral War Memorial High School as listed below. Number six, to approve the following stipends for required NCLB title IASI family math and reading rates. Number seven, to approve the employment as listed below. Number eight, to approve the following certified personnel for the SAT prep program. Number nine, to approve the following professional days as listed below. Number ten, to acknowledge the selection of the following teachers to represent the Cerebral District in the 2013 Annual Middlesex County Governor's Teacher Recognition Program. Ricky Lee Sable, Arloth Elementary School. Mona Focore, Eisenhower School. Eddie Howard, Truman School. April Magistro, Wilson School. Janet Usman, Samso upper elementary school. Doreen Consolano, Cerebral Middle School. Joseph Gazinsky, Cerebral War Memorial High School. I want to congratulate all the teachers. Number eleven, approved substitute list. Section E. Any questions?
I have a question. For the high school wear color guard, why are we approving advisors now? Was there a change in advisors?
Yes. Doctor Alfano, I have a question for number eight. How many days and weeks does this run? For the SAT program? The SAT course begins February sixth. Each class meets on Wednesday evenings for eight weeks. You can attend for one or both subjects, math, linguistics. The cost is one hundred twenty dollars per class and two hundred twenty dollars for both. Thank you.
I also have a question. Are these stipends something we do every year or is this? Or is this new this year?
Number six. Yes.
I would also like to congratulate all those teachers selected for the Governor's Teacher Recognition Program.
Any other questions? Doctor Alfano, you read right very well.
I say it a lot.
Moving on to section E, Policy. One, no reports. Section A, Curriculum.
We have an addition. Hold on, hold on. Go back to number seven. Under, under, under certified. Personnel certified. Number seven. Just say, please go back to Personnel Certified, number seven.
Please go back to Personnel Certified, number seven. We have two additions. We are adding Thomas Wannizek.
Location.
Location, Cerebral Middle School.
Assignment.
Assignment, replacement, health, and physical education teacher.
Pro-rated salary.
Pro-rated salary, forty-four thousand seven hundred fifty-three. BA Step One.
Effective dates.
Effective dates, March seventh, two thousand thirteen through June thirtieth, two thousand thirteen. Non-tenure, non-tenure check. We need to put this in now so he can start. He's been here before. It's extending his term. This is a new nurse we have to put in. The nurse Spock.
From Miss Kenny.
From Miss Kenny.
In Truman School.
In Truman School. She is a school nurse and health teacher. Her salary is pro-rated fifty-five thousand six hundred fifty-three. BA plus thirty, Step Eight. Effective dates pending completion of paperwork. March sixth, two thousand thirteen through June thirtieth, two thousand thirteen. Tenure check. Thank you.
I have a question. Are nurses always on tenure track?
This one is because the other one retired.
Thank you.
Section F, Curriculum. Number one, the Board of Education is requested to accept harassment, intimidation, and board reports and findings for reports number forty-one and number forty-five. Number two, to approve the following for the Special Services Department as listed below. Moving right along. Does anybody have any questions? The Board of Education is requested to approve the Progress Targets Action Plan for Samso upper elementary school. Does anybody have any question?
Doctor Alfano, explain it please.
S. Agalas, please explain.
Mr. Agalas, please explain.
I'll explain it and I'll let her speak on behalf of somebody else. With the with the changes in the waivers for NCLB waiver, we are now are we now have target goals. So where we used to have AYP, where we had an annual yearly progress, this now has been replaced, but in its place, schools are giving progress target goals that they have to meet. And if a school doesn't meet it, we have to describe a plan, we have to put a plan in place that describes how we will meet the goals in the prior year. And the only school this year that didn't meet the target goals was the UES.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving right along to section F, Curriculum. Number one, the Board of Education. Okay, sorry. Moving to G, Co-Curriculum. We have withdrawn number one. Number two, to approve a change in date for the Powder Puff Football Game. Number three, to approve the Cerebral War Memorial High School art teachers to conduct an exhibition. Number four, to approve a Truman School family night. Number five, to amend the dates for the NJAS tutorial. Number six, to approve the Cerebral War Memorial High School class of two thousand fifteen to sponsor a student versus faculty volleyball game. Number seven, to approve the Cerebral War Memorial High School peer leadership program to host a dance. Number eight, to approve the Samso upper elementary school to hold a drama club performance of the Grammy Awards. Doctor Alfano, I recommend you attend the show.
Which one? I think it's clear, doc. Very funny. I should say it, very funny.
Very funny. Number nine, to approve the Truman elementary school to host the Battle of the Books. Number ten, to approve the Arloth elementary school to host the Battle of the Books. Number eleven, to approve the Samso upper elementary school character education program to hold a family movie night. Number twelve, to approve the Cerebral War Memorial High School Spanish Honor Society induction ceremony to take place on Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen. Any questions? Doctor Alfano, I have a question.
What? I'm sorry.
The UES character education program holds in a family movie night on March seventh. Is the cost and what movie is being shown?
The cost is a dollar. It's a buckarino. And they're and they're playing the Lorax. Thank you. It's a Dr. Seuss book turned into a movie. Any other questions? Section H, Support Services. Number one, where the transportation policy as listed below. Number five, to approve retroactively the following chip below. Number six, to approve the following seven chips as listed below. We have added an extra one. Letter H. Which is on the new agenda. Mr. McEnam, that concludes my report. Nice job, Doctor Alfano. Do any board members have any questions?
I have a question.
I knew it.
I don't have letter H. Can you tell us what the trip is, please?
Oh my lord.
Mr. Agalas, please read. On Sunday, March twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen, seventeen members of the Cerebral BIC and chaprones to clear view cinemas in Aberdeen to see the movie The Cruise. Two board buses will be utilized at a cost of one hundred ninety-seven and twenty-one cents. Salary, one hundred eighty-six and twenty-one cents. Fuel, one, eleven dollars per bus for a total cost of three hundred ninety-four and forty-two cents to be paid by the Cerebral BIC Association. Buses will depart from Wilson School. Does anybody have any other questions?
I have a question. What does, in H, what does BIC mean?
Brain injured children. Thank you. Welcome.
I have another question for Mr. DeAngelo about the budget. Could you explain what it means in the budget resolution when it says travel maximum?
Please repeat the question.
Could you explain what it means in the budget resolution when it says travel maximum?
The requirements by law that we have to stay. How much money we are budgeting. The reimbursement for actual travel expenses for the school year.
Thank you.
Mr. McEnam, there are reports from the Assistant Superintendent, the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Director Special Services, and the Director of Faculty and Maintenance. First, I would like to do the district highlights. Mrs. Saye, please view the district highlights.
On February seventeenth, the Eisenhower students participated in Jump World for Heart. As a result of their hard work and help of Mr. Tola and Mrs. Braun, the students raised an amazing seven thousand one hundred dollars. This money will aid in research for the American Heart Association. Both Mr. Tola and Mrs. Braun promised to support pink hair if the students raised a minimum of five thousand dollars. On Friday, February twenty-second, they stuck to their promise and spent the day with pink hair. Mr. Tola and Mrs. Braun would like to give a special thanks to the PDO and all the parents who helped.
Yes. Okay. Can Mr. and Mrs. Zyknar-Szetyak? Please give your report.
Our parent involvement council meeting was held last night. Mr. Bryan, Principal of Arloth School, discussed child development and how it was related to children at home and school. The next meeting will be on May sixth.
The Director of Curriculum and Instruction, please give your report.
We are continuing to finalize a number of curricula for board approval over the next few months.
Thank you. The Director of Special Services, please give your report.
This school district provides This school district provides supports to classified students from preschool through high school. Some students will receive services until they are twenty-one so that they can get jobs for further training. We try to keep, we try to keep students with their typical peers as much as possible, but some students need more special instruction in a separate setting.
The Director of Faculties and Maintenance, please give your report.
Summer of two thousand thirteen, the Eisenhower School will be receiving a new roof. Winter of two thousand thirteen, the maintenance department is restoring seven classrooms at the Solover School with the anticipation of these classrooms being used in the fall of two thousand thirteen. Spring of two thousand thirteen, the maintenance department at the middle school will be changing out office and classroom security locks. Summer of two thousand thirteen, providing that the school budget passes the SUES, Truman School and Eisenhower School will be getting a new wireless clock system throughout the school.
Those are very excellent reports. Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite the public to ask questions on any agenda items. That's perfect. I would like to close the public portion. Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's report?
Sounds.
Mr. DeAngelo, please take a roll call vote. Number five, Mrs. Rakuya. Yes. Second, by Mrs. DePinto. Mr. Belka?
Yes.
Mrs. Backham?
Yes.
Mr. Rashada?
Yes.
Mr. Brodzinski?
Yes.
Mr. Saye?
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mrs. Rakuya?
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp?
Yes.
Mr. McEnam? Absolutely. Doggett, the New Jersey School Boards Association, Kevin Saye.
The Student Megan Nation Dinner, scheduled for tomorrow, has been postponed due to the weather. It will be rescheduled for a later month, date. On March first, big budget cuts occurred for the United States government, which will affect education next year. We are worried about these cuts and that they will affect the education we receive in Cerebral. Please tell Congress to protect our education and ask them to cut the budget in other places.
Thank you, Mr. Saye. Mr. Saye, that's the best report you've given.
Thank you.
And detail is very short, too. Doctor Alfano, do we have any topics for discussions? Yes, we do. What are they? And it's gonna talk about the district calendar.
Excuse me, I have a committee report. The Curriculum Committee Report. Discussed with the VP of the High School, the scheduling process in the High School. We discussed block scheduling. Right now, the High School administration wants to postpone any implementation of logging signs and gym until two thousand fourteen. We discussed doing a pilot for September two thousand thirteen. We discussed technology devices with regards to the budget and park. We discussed exam, exam, exemptions for seniors and also with regard to AP classes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Backham.
I have a committee report.
Go ahead.
The Finance Committee had a meeting last week and the administration had copies of the recommended CAP complaints budget delivered to the board to review for this past weekend.
Thank you, Mr. Bunka. You're welcome. Is there anybody else who would like to help us? Is there anybody else who would like to help us?
I would like to commend all the students and the teachers and certainly the board members and the administrators for helping out. This is truly one of our favorite evenings. Um, we only have really one other item or a few other items to discuss, uh, but I know the children have to get home, it's eight o'clock. Uh, we'll take a little bit of a break. Uh, if you guys wanna stay, stick around a little bit, we'll be talking a little bit about next year's school calendar, but it's too difficult to discuss if we're going back and forth. And, uh, we'll just give you some highlights, but thank you very much, parents, ladies and gentlemen, it truly is a, a fun evening, so, um, I'd ask that the students, you can move back to your seats, you can go home, we're gonna take a few minutes, uh, while you guys break, and, uh, once again, thank you.
Doctor Afana, I have a question. So is the Board of Education smarter than fifth graders?
Uh, absolutely. They're certainly smarter than me.
I would like to thank the Board of Education and Mister McEnam for letting us participate in this event today. We really appreciate it.
Okay, Doctor Afana, uh, we got the, um, the report, voted on, taken care of, um, we wanted to talk about discussion and highlights.
Yeah, I'd like to start with, um, the school.
I'd like to start with the school calendar, just wanted to give you some highlights, um, I had it here, I don't know what I did with it. Um, hold on one second, let me just find it. Um, just, just a few. Just a few highlights. Nice, Mister DeAndrea.
It's always your fault. How come mine never works?
It did, you banged it.
Uh, just a few highlights, uh, for the proposed calendar. Uh, next year. Yeah, Tom, believe me.
Bring the other Doctor Afana back.
Just a, just a few, few highlights, next year the calendar is a few anomalies, and I just wanna give you some highs and again, this is, I've just thrown that, uh, thrown these numbers out. Next year, uh, the Labor Day is September second, and, uh, the third and the fourth, the teachers would come back. The fifth is Rosh Hashanah, we would have off from school, and the sixth is a day that we have, at least I have decided, that the students would come back, which is a Friday. Um, another, uh, thing would be, um, then in October, and we would not have Columbus Day. In November, it's a bit choppy, you're talking about, uh, and we always talked about security. Uh, once again, this year, uh, we would have, uh, next year we would have Staff Development Day on Election Day rather than Columbus Day, because we prefer not to have the students in the building, uh, during Election Day, um, which is November fifth, November seventh and eighth is Teachers Convention, there would be no school. Veterans Day, as it was this year, which is a Monday, is no school, uh, and then Thanksgiving is the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. Um, another question on whether or not to give, and we were going back and forth, is next year, Christmas is a Wednesday, so we were debating on whether or not to give that Monday, the twenty-third, which we decided to do, so, uh, the winter break is from December twenty-third, which is a Monday, I'm sorry, which is a, um.
On Monday.
I'm sorry. Um, December twenty-third is a Monday to the thirty-first, and then obviously January first is the following, so it's a Monday to the following Wednesday. Uh, Martin Luther King would be January twentieth, President's Day would be February seventeen. Um, this year, um, the spring break would be the week, next year the spring break would be, once again, the week before, and that does take into consideration Passover, but we would not have the day after, uh, Easter, because we're trying to get out a little bit earlier, that's one of the, uh, reasons why we gave up one of the other days. And Memorial Day Weekend is the twenty-sixth, and, uh, Easter, spring recess is very late next year, it's the fourteenth through the eighteenth. I believe Easter's the twentieth next year, and students would get out June eighteenth. Something a little bit different we did this year is we started, wh- when you read the bottom of the calendar, we always put, the above calendar does not allow for increment weather days if schools are closed for any reason, and some of the days may be made up at the end of the school year, or, and I, we started to dump in Teachers Convention, November seventh, November eighth, January twentieth, February seventeen, April fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth, and May twenty-sixth. Makeup days will impact, of course, the days of graduation. Um, I, you know, we kicked this around, I've sent it out a few times, I've gotten some input from the principals, um, open to any suggestions, this is, I've also sent this to the SCA, I sent a copy to, uh, Mister Veris, um, at the beginning of the week, I believe, uh, today's Tuesday, I sent it to him yesterday, so he hadn't come up yet, and, um, we'd like to get it approved on the twenty-sixth if possible, uh, which is usually when we do it, we usually do approve our calendar.
What's the board's thoughts about anything? Anybody have any concerns, issues?
Starting coming back for one day and then having off for the weekend, um, would be be better off starting on the Monday and having that extra day in June.
Well, Doctor Afana, I talked about that piece as well, and the logic, I guess, behind it was, we bring everyone back, first of all, the teachers are back anyway. You know, earlier in the week, but you bring everyone back on that Friday, it gives them a chance to get a lot of the administrative stuff, you know, filling out the index cards, you know, books distributed, uh, class lists, supply lists out, and then, you know, uh, parents will have the weekend to get any other less many items that you can get, and then Monday when they come back, they're ready to jump right into instruction.
And once again, uh, Mister Sayak, Mister McEnam, I talked about this, you're going later into the year, the deeper you put days in, I don't have to tell you, this year we got crushed, so I always get a little bit concerned about, you know, my biggest concern is in November, because it's always so chopped up, so I'm trying to limit the amount of days in the beginning of the year, and young Kipper is on the weekend, so we, we, we don't need to give that holiday off, but Rosh Hashanah, um, is very early next year, there's nothing we can do about it. But again, I mean, if, whatever the pleasure is, I mean, I'm here, so it doesn't matter one way or the other.
Did you, uh, talk about maybe a lot of times districts start the teachers before Labor Day, and then we won't have to come in on it?
I can't, contractually.
We can't do that.
No. That's a good idea, I would love to try to do that, but I can't go in August.
Yeah, we can start before Labor Day, we can't start before September.
We can start before, but, uh, Labor Day's so early this year.
Before September one, Labor Day is what, the second?
Yes, Labor Day is the second. Yeah, we tried that once, that didn't work.
My only input is, based on my experience, last year was the Columbus Day issue. We upset some of the countrymen.
I know, I got, I got, uh, my, my fellow Italian called, uh, Italiano called me from Italy, and I had to put a video on the phone about five years ago.
No, we, we were, we were approached during, um, Sable Day, there were some folks that felt that that should be a day. What are the districts doing on that day? I know some districts.
Some districts have it, some districts don't. I mean, even Mike, um, and, and we discussed this, and I know Veterans Day is a big, big, big issue, but, um, we ran a very nice Martin Luther King Day, and we ran a very nice President's Day, and teachers did a wonderful job, because when they came in, our thrust was to really hone in on that specific holiday. My concern is, the more days that we give off, the deeper in the year we're gonna go. Also, if I had to give days off, I'd like to take some days from November and, or wherever, the beginning of the year, and move them into February and/or, because it's a long haul in the middle of the year, and we're finding it out now, that that's just, for teachers, it's a very long haul, and I always, I always remember, I used to get that winter break from February, from President's, at President's Week, that was great, I know we can't do that now, but it, there is something, obviously, um, you know, at least we get President's Day. Whatever, whatever, again, whatever's your pleasure, I'm fine with it.
What does the board think about Columbus Day?
Oh, I, I'm sorry. The only other option to keep the last day in June would be to go half-day Monday of Christmas and half-Columbus.
We, well, it's funny you say that, because that's my, that was my original thought, um, and, uh, I got some pushback with that, that that would be a real non.
Productive.
Productive day, and, and the administrators kinda said, you know, uh, it's not, the first day of school is very administrative, but you come back on that, that, that December twenty-third.
What do we, what do you mean is a non-productive day?
I would say if we came back on December twenty-third, there would be a lot of.
Well, then no make it a half-day.
I, I, look, I'm, I don't think, I'm, I'm just concerned, originally that's what I put in, I put in originally.
Well, if, if Christmas fell on a Friday, you wouldn't be taking Wednesday off.
No.
So why would, do you think?
Well, it's one day in the middle of, it's one day in the week, and how does that affect like eating and stuff, is that, is that an issue?
No. No.
I, I would need a question, what are, how strong our attendance would be, and I'm not talking staff, I'm talking students, um, how strong our attendance would be on that day, especially.
Well, originally I had it that way. Originally, we, we, I had it after that.
What do you mean, what do you tend to, do you go to school? I don't care, I guess maybe I'm confused.
Whatever, whatever, again, whatever the board's pleasure is, I've kicked this around five different ways, so any way you tell me, I've had it that way and I.
Well, my input would be to make December twenty-third a school day and then take Columbus Day off. That's just my input on one person, if anybody else agrees to that.
Uh, my, my input is, we could go to school on Columbus Day, I, I, the few people that it would bother, I think, yeah, it's not a big deal, I apologize to those people, but I will. And, um, that Friday.
It's a federal holiday, you know, and we're often, we, we take holidays that are not federal holidays, so how do you?
I, I would agree, if you're gonna take something, you should add something, so it should be, you know, not that you just add another day as a, as a, as a, as a day, I think you have to pull days, and that's what we were doing with Mister Sayak and Mister McEnam, we were, we're trying to keep the last day of school the eighteenth.
Right.
So we really don't wanna put any, we don't wanna push any later.
And we can do that by, by substituting.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, it's up to you, but again, this is, whatever you guys wanna do.
I do, I mean, that makes sense. A lot of PTOs have parties on that day before winter break, and there's usually programs that day, too, so it's not a great teaching day anyway, but because of those situations, students are still gonna show up, and the parents are working, so there's still gonna be a place for them to have a juice. My kids would be going, you know, show up and play.
All, all I need to know is, uh, Mike, you wanna just go, go down the line?
Well, that's my recommendation, I mean, I, I have to get five, four of the people to agree, if not, I, I'm a big boy, we'll press on.
Well, can we just talk about it and then?
Well, who, who, okay, who's agreeable to come to school on the twenty-third and take Columbus Day off?
Half-day.
What's a half-day? Yeah, it would be a half-day no matter, you're talking the twenty-third. Twenty-third would be a half-day.
Why does it have to be a half-day?
We've al- it's always, it's always been a half-day.
My kids never go for a half-day.
It's always been a half-day.
If it's gonna be more unproductive.
I'm just telling you, that's what it is, we've done that.
The day before Christmas probably was always a half-day.
It's always, that's what I'm saying, it's always a half-day.
Yeah. Okay, well, let me rephrase the question, um, whether it's a half-day or full day, who is supportive of having that school day and taking Columbus Day? That's my, my, are you supportive of that?
If it's a half-day, yes.
I'm supportive either way, okay.
Okay, well, I, I still don't quite understand your question, but Columbus Day, I'm, I'm good with coming to school, um, the.
So you're voting now?
So are you, are you okay with substituting the twenty-third for Columbus Day? Come to school on the twenty-third because it's a half-day, a full day, and you take off Columbus Day?
I'm, I'm more intrigued, I'm more willing to go to, to come to school on the twenty-third, but then let's take another day off, it's maybe end of the school year or go.
You have to go.
I have a thing about that.
I'm confused.
Sorry, so am I, but I also wanna say that, that Friday, that we come back to school after Labor Day, do a certain percent of the students have to be here, or does it really matter?
There's attendance for the day count.
Counts. Yeah, well.
Well, like seventy-five percent have to be here, or how, what?
Those are the first things. There's percentages of students that have to be in attendance for the day counts of school days?
There's, I have no idea what that percentage is.
I think, I think you need to finish the, finish the survey you were taking. Yes or no? Talk about other things. I guess Jill's yes, Captain.
No, Jill's not yes, Jill's no.
I don't know what you are.
Jill's no.
Well, then we can let her think about it.
She doesn't wanna go to.
No, I'm not gonna go to school on the twenty-third.
If it's a half-day, no.
Okay, if it was a full day, you'd be supportive of it?
Maybe, 'cause it's more unproductive as a half-day. Yes.
Well, productive or unproductive depends on who's standing in front of the class. Next, Phyllis.
I agree with Jill.
I'm letting that the fifth grade is back. You agree with Jill as far as if, what? What is your preference?
Well, what do you think Jill said?
Well, Jill doesn't know, so I don't know.
I'm, I'm okay with going to school on the twenty-third, but I don't wanna substitute it for Columbus Day.
You wanna still go to school Columbus Day, okay.
Well, I don't, I have an other day.
You have enough, okay, all right, okay, no problem, Mister.
If we're a little trained.
I have a question. Sure. For the Teachers Convention, is that always in November? Can't they have a different month? No, it's always that.
That's everybody.
Yeah, like Junichuayo. They didn't have it this year. No, because it's snowing, but the, but the state, the state called it off, yeah.
State convention.
Yeah, you'd have to find. You want, you want to, no school on twentieth?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third. Right, and then not go to school on Columbus Day.
I don't know why.
I'm gonna go to twentieth in December. The twenty-third in December, right. My question's the same, is that a half or a full day? Uh, my, my preference is a full day, but they're telling me never done that, but if it was a half-day, I'm okay with it, you know, but. When is Columbus Day, October twelfth? Yeah, you, you're about, it's a Monday and. I don't even know.
Fourteen.
Yeah, fourteen, you okay? You keep it going.
No.
People aren't voting. Yeah, Mister, Mister, may I make a suggestion? What, why don't you just ask everyone for the twenty-third, no school, half-day or full-day? And let's get that issue resolved first. Okay. That might. Tom, Tom, what do you think? The twenty-third, half-day? School on, uh, Columbus Day, that's it. Okay. And the twenty-third, what, what do you think about the December twenty-third, half-day, full-day? Nobody will be here. So he's a no.
If it's a half-day.
Call. I think you're right, I think if you, if you do have school on Monday, if it's a half-day, it will be, attendance will be very low. Okay, for the votes, do you really know? Um, Helen?
Are we regrouping?
No, just asking about half or full day on the twenty-third. But I, I, what was the vote so far? I'm losing track here.
Is this a new question?
Give twenty-third, you want a half-day, a full-day, or no-day? That's the question. Call says, call is a no's. No. Alright, so that's two for no. Right. Phyllis.
I'm voting in.
The twenty-third, just, not voting, but just inquiry.
Do I wanna go to school on the twenty-third? I, I said I was okay.
Okay.
The first.
Yeah, a full day.
I prefer a full day, I don't think Jill, she has a good one.
Okay, okay, two no and a full.
I prefer no school on the twenty-third.
Okay. Three no's and a full. Captain? I'm a no. Four no's and a full. Okay. Mister Trapp?
I'm a no.
Five no's and a full.
I'm okay with full or, or, or half-day, okay? And Miss.
I was on paper.
Okay, so we're not building school, oh, you're okay, you're, you're a full, alright, so we got five for a no. Okay. So we're closed on the twenty-third. Closed on the twenty-third. So closed on the twenty-third, take care of that issue.
Just what you suggested.
Okay, now, Phyllis.
Well, I saw what I had originally, I'm just telling you, I went back and forth three times.
Mrs. Backer, you suggested that you had another day to take off other.
Well, I, how would they take off? I had, um, an issue with three of these, we have three yellow days, um. PLC. PLC days for half-days, um, could we not have three half-days? Is there a way to just have a full day off instead?
No, contractually it can't.
The contract states we have to have three half-days for PLCs?
Well, the contract, the, the contract allows us to have these three, but we can only have a certain amount of, of teacher workshops during the course of the year, so if we have two. So if we have two days, and the contract says at the beginning of the year, we have to have two days for the teachers to, when they come in, we have one at the end of the year, so it's three, and if we have one election day, it'll be four. So you, you can't go any more than that.
Right, but this, from a instructional perspective, all of these half-days, reeks habit on the instruction, especially in the high schools, when the students are always missing the same classes, and these half-days, there's-
I don't disagree with you, but this is a bigger issue than the PLC days. You've got conferences that eat up tons of half-days. You have, you know, I mean-
But they're not on here.
Well, the conferences even aren't there, but I, but we're taught, we're discussing these things. We're trying to renegotiate them.
They give too many half-days.
We're trying to renegotiate that.
And now we have the twenty-third.
Well, the reason we put PLCs in, we have, we have that time to do these PLCs, and right now, we don't.
Right, but I remember, there were times when we used to have a, like, we have one-step development day. What's the difference between staff development day and a PLC day?
Go ahead, then. She can explain it back.
Staff development is, we look to have a number of different workshops. It's a longer length of time. The PLCs are professional learning communities that the teachers work in groups, anywhere from four to eight teachers, working on a specific topic and sustained throughout the year. They work on the same topic throughout the whole year.
So each of those three days, they're doing the same? The same teachers are working on the same topic?
Right, right, they're working, like, this year, because we didn't have staff development day, because of the storm, is when we were going to kick it all off with the PLCs. Our first PLC day was in January. Teachers met, they came up in their groups with action plans for what they were going to be doing for the rest of the year, and who's gonna be responsible. They do research. Um, sometimes they come up with units of study. I mean, it's a whole variety of things.
And how many hours is that?
It's, it's about two hours. It, 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 they spent about two hours on each of those days, working together on a common topic.
So for two hours, we have to give the students a half-a-day? So can't you do a day of four hours? But is, is this a, a SEA contract thing?
No.
No, it's a state thing?
Professional learning communities were brought about through state, through the professional development plans, and it's supposed to be sustained. It's not supposed to be like just one day or two days. It's supposed to be scheduled throughout the year so that, let's say, whatever your topic is, you work on it, let's say, first in the fall as a group. You, maybe everyone does a little research on their own, they do things with, in their classes, they come back again, they revisit it, they do different things, and so it's sustained throughout the year.
So does the state say we have to do it three times a year? Is that, where does the three times a year come from?
They, they, they don't give us a number of times.
And they don't give you a number of hours? They just say you have to do it?
Right.
So it's flexible?
It's, yes, it's somewhat flexible.
Okay, so we agreed that there's gonna be no school on the twenty-third, that's correct. Now, let's go back to the Columbus Day thing. Um, this is the Pinto. School or no school?
I understand, you give Columbus Day, you're gonna increase your, you're gonna go into general-
Yeah, you're not, because you're just, because you already, you already factored in the twenty-third not being a school.
Right.
Right?
Right, but you give another day off, you're going deeper into-
I know, but your calendar, when you counted your days-
Correct.
Your twenty-third day off.
There's no, there's no issue right now.
What day of the week is the Juneteenth and the nineteenth?
The eighteenth is a Wednesday, and the nineteenth is a Thursday. The nineteenth's the last day for staff.
Wait, say that again, please.
Eighteenth to nineteenth.
Wednesday, Thursday. Wednesday for students, Thursday for-
So the question is real simple. You go to school on Columbus Day, you go another day in June.
I, well, I would have preferred to have Columbus Day. No, if you go to school on Columbus Day, you're off a day earlier in June. No.
No, that's not what I said. I said, if you take Columbus Day off, you're gonna stand this school year.
Add one day.
Add a day.
Okay, so you prefer to be off on Columbus Day. Mr. Baldwin? Shall I return?
Shall I return?
It's, Miss Trapp?
School on Columbus Day.
Uh, Mr. Sigh.
I, I'm okay with giving Columbus Day off, because it's only gonna push the last day of school one day to a Friday. So I'm okay with taking off Columbus Day.
Mrs. Bruno?
I'm okay with going to school on Columbus Day.
Miss Trapp?
Um, either way, I'm fine.
Well, you have to, no, you have to decide one way or the other.
Because I'll count that as a off then.
Or it's gonna be a stay.
No, then I'll just count, oh, alright.
Two, two, one.
I'll say go to school.
Go to school. Mr. Brzezinski?
I will say have off for Columbus Day.
Mr. Prashap?
School.
And I-
Four, four, so Mr. Baldwin, you have to decide and vote.
Oh, my gosh.
That's the disadvantage.
That's a disadvantage going last.
Mr. Fizzi's first.
Can I get some Jeopardy music?
I just don't, it's morning.
If you're staying, it stays the way it is.
Oh, he's, he's leading you on.
Well, you don't have a clue.
Dan, Dan, you're elected to make the decision.
I know, I'm trying to think, I wanted to be right there.
You need my help?
Let me know by next week.
And whatever, oh, I guess.
What was your answer, Mike?
My answer was to take, take, take off. Is to have no school on Columbus Day.
Then you have the day at the end.
I would want, why would that be? What would you, like, what you're with me?
It's a federal holiday.
It's a federal holiday, it's, uh-
Initially, we had a day off.
Yeah.
Well, the past few years, we've had.
Yes, but they give a full last, last, I think.
Go for a day.
I'm okay taking the day off, because-
Five for days off.
Okay, so the day's off, and, uh, barring any other changes, we conclude on, uh, the Thursday, the nineteenth, or fifteenth.
So what are we doing here?
So what are we going to, to lessen the number of half-days?
Nothing.
Nothing? How many half-days do we have in the calendar?
Wait, the count of the conferences aren't equipped.
Right, so it's already been-
I think we have to come back to that answer.
Yep, nineteenth to the twentieth.
So we're gonna use a new format? Do you, do you like that format?
Yes, well, we, we gotta figure it out. We're still trying to do it, but, but for all intents and purposes, I'm just using this as the draft.
Okay.
But when we come out with it, we're gonna try to use the format that you gave us.
Alright.
I, I'd like to say one other thing. We shouldn't discuss this with the kids in front of them and went back.
Oh, you're right. What they would have been done-
Miss Trapp, right.
I think we would've got better input, since we're not the ones going.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. Trapp, I just-
It doesn't matter to me, I'm here.
Got some lightning, better comments.
Okay, Mrs. Trapp?
What I'd like to say is, the, the makeup day is a possible implement weather day. Memorial Day? I, I don't think that we should-
Jill, God forbid, I gotta use it, you use it, but that's the last-
Aren't we gonna, I'd rather go one extra day than Memorial Day. You're, you're talking about people complaining about Columbus Day.
No, that's if we have to make it up.
You're not gonna get an argument for me, Mrs. Trapp.
Miss Trapp, believe me, I don't wanna go to school on Memorial Day.
I don't, I, no, I don't like that.
Well, that would be, that would be a vote we must take, right? That would be a vote we'd take.
Ladies and gentlemen, you're, you're in sayable, okay? We're not going to school on Memorial Day, period.
Well, then we shouldn't list it on here.
Then you might go on Saturday, but that's our-
Not going on Memorial Day.
Saturday Memorial Day.
I have to drink beer.
Trade, trade Columbus Day for the Memorial Day.
Let's hope.
Alright, um, we done with the, we done with the thirteen, fourteen calendar?
Are we, are we on Columbus Day or not?
Yeah, Columbus Day, we're on.
We are off Columbus Day.
We're all gonna be off.
Right, yeah.
By a vote of five to four.
And you move in one day at the end of the calendar.
So we're moving one day.
Yeah, nineteen and twenty now.
So are we gonna put Columbus Day on the bottom of the table?
Columbus Day, no, that'll be two or-
Two or all.
Right. Alright, any other discussion on the thirteen, fourteen calendar? If not, the question I have for you on today's calendar, this year's calendar, what happens if you have to call school on Thursday?
Uh, my recommendation is to go at the end of the year.
And go until the end of the year.
That's, I have too many people that have got plans to go away. Um, it's, and it would create, it would create, look, my goal, everybody that's here, I hope, you know, and pray that it doesn't snow. But the bottom line is, is that I just think it would create havoc right now, two weeks before. We're, we're ready to go.
What do we do with the HESPA then? We just extend it?
The HESPA, we already, I already taken care of that. If, if we, we have no school, or we have a delayed opening, the HESPA moves to the next day.
Friday.
Goes to Friday. Yeah, I've already spoken to Mrs. Cope. And I, and I wanna make sure that if we, if we do get a snow day, which is about fifty-fifty right now, or, or an inclement, what, uh, a, a late opening, we will, uh, move the, move the HESP. So we won't know that till probably tomorrow night.
Any other discussion? I just have one topic. Um, last planning would be, the developers of the National League, which is called APPOINT, uh, came before the planning board on informal presentation. Um, initially, when this development was sold to Sayable, um, they always had the two thousand residential unit configuration. However, the bedrooms were one and two bedrooms. That was the initial configuration. Their briefing as of last week, um, of that two thousand units, four hundred and ninety-four of them, all are townhouses, or townhomes, will be three bedrooms. Four hundred and ninety-four of them. Uh, when you used the standard model that developers and planners used to, to figure out how many school-aged children that would drive, um, their answer, and it's accurate, came out to three hundred to three hundred and fifty, uh, additional school-aged children. So, um, this is a long planned development, uh, supposed to break ground, um, this fall, and, um, it goes out nine to ten years. So a lot can change, um, depending on the economy, but that's the plan right now that's on the book.
But I would guess that the first thing to hit is the houses, correct? Usually, that's how it works on plans. Do you have a timeline at all?
Well, the breakout they have not done yet, they do that when they have to come for site plan approval, or what they call a formal presentation. Then they have to come up and say, okay, they're gonna build, uh, the first thing going up is the bathroom, that's the anchor. And then, once they build that, they're gonna build part of the mall, and then they'll start building some residential units.
So the mall will-
It's gonna be phased in as they go.
For the residential, so you think?
Part of it, several malls, there's an indoor mall, there's an outdoor mall, there's all kinds of configurations. And I will, uh, see if I can get some more copies of the plan to give you, uh, share with the board. Um, but the concern is, is the number of, of school-aged children, and that will drive, and it's three to three hundred and fifty, so just for future planning, um, that's the story. Any other discussions to provoke up in the public?
Does anybody have any?
On the budget, yes, the budget, yeah, we, we kind of skimmed that over. Um, I saw it, and, um, and a lot of it was self-explanatory. You used the blue colors, it was very helpful. That was the idea that was-
Oh, who wasn't blue?
Well, there was, there was a color, a pink.
Blue and red?
Blue and red, it was blue and red. Who made the color?
Red, I think it was blue.
I, I actually thought the budget was, was, was very well done. Um, I mean, there were very few changes by the Finance Committee, which to me means that the administration put together a, you know, a pretty good budget in the first place.
You know, I love the increase in tax rate.
Love the increases. One million sixty-three, seven eighty-four, which equals five point two cents. So, our tax rate's going at five point two cents, six hundred dollars per set value for each holder.
How much?
Five point two cents for a hundred dollars.
And what does that come up, the average assessment in dollar amount, sixty-eight, twenty-nine?
Seventy-four, seventy-four, fifty-seven.
Seven, thank you.
There's savings on the debt service, because of refunding, that's why it's-
Right, I see that, yeah.
That's the lower, the number lower, but-
Sixty-eight, twenty-nine. And that brings it to what, one point nine percent of the taxing contribution level. Anybody have any questions or concerns? I echo Kevin's sentiment. This is the first budget I got, I understood. But then I expect that from Dan, that this is your bellywack, so, I know this is a very tedious process, trying to figure out the budget, and it's getting better every year as we continue to try to improve the process, so, do we have any questions?
We have some new teachers there, Joe.
Yes, so, yep.
Could someone just summarize the budget?
What I think is important that you know that's in this budget is you've got six new teachers, um, within the budget, one new technician. Uh, we're gonna infuse a number of iPads district-wide, be it elementary through, we're looking at thirty, thirty iPads for each elementary, at the middle school, and the high school, and the elementary, and the upper elementary. Four sets of thirty, as far as iPads. Uh, you have the description of your capital projects. Also, not listed there was a smaller one, uh, increasing the generator to include additional lighting, or possible refrigeration. Uh, there's money in there for technology. Uh, there's still money in there for maintenance of your buildings, six new teachers, uh, money in there for salary increases. Uh, and as I wrote to the board, uh, we work together, and, and it's a good budget, and, um, hopefully, it gives us the method to move forward in, in a good fashion from year to year. Uh, the board also, or the committee, I should say, agreed that we're gonna take a closer look towards the end of June, uh, to prepare, uh, and possibly put money again to the side for capital reserve for any future projects that we may see coming along. And it seems like right now, Solover may be that capital project that we need to set aside, uh, soon as we, uh, determine what we're doing with redistricting and things of that nature. Um, so we're working together. Uh, we did receive an additional five hundred thousand dollars in state aid, because we
So we're working together, uh, we did receive an additional five hundred thousand dollars in state aid, because we were so far under adequacy. Uh, the downside, I believe, I wrote to one person, or I actually wrote it in a quick note, we had to pay additional money to school development authority for the money that we bought, they, they gave us to do our improvement, so, they give you money for a grant, and now they're charging us for giving us that money for the grant. So we got there with an extra hundred thousand, so the net effect was roughly around four hundred thousand dollars of additional aid, um. It helps us, it definitely keeps us moving in the right direction. Uh, the committee, uh, is concerned about where we are being with fund balance and future tax relief, uh, but we're going to continue to monitor it and, and keep a close eye on it. But we're one of the few districts folks that, uh, over the last few years, that are actually adding on staff year to year. So we're working together collectively between the board and the administration, to keep putting money into the classroom. Uh, I did do the new budget format, and when you see, uh, see the printout, uh, you'll see a dramatic increase in classroom supply costs, uh, compared to last year's budget and money you expended to go. And other costs are coming down, support services, administrative costs, and other things, per pupil cost is starting to come down. But the classroom cost is rising, and the things of that nature, so that, that's, that's something that you, you, you need to be proud of, because you're, you made a commitment to put more money into the classrooms, a, and we're succeeding at that. We have those new, um, assessment tools for the elementaries, that they have money in there, uh, I forget what it was, uh, to do with the reading and all that.
DRAs and guided reading libraries.
And things of that nature. You have smart boards, fifty thousand dollars for smart boards, and in there, there's two hundred thousand dollars in the budget for the park assessment. The state has not yet determined what is the best tool to use, be it a laptop, iPad, or a hybrid of that nature. The finance committee agreed to put two hundred thousand dollars to start phasing in whatever type of technology we need for the park assessment that's coming in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, in front of you to make sure it goes the year round, so. There's money here to make improvement and move forward, a hundred thousand dollars for securities, and interior locks, and again, another item we'll, we'll be discussing is, uh, security upgrades district-wide, uh, that we want to work, first work through the administration, and then turn it over to the buildings and grounds. So that may be money that you'll need at the end of the year for capital reserve additionally.
So the next meeting, do we formally adopt the budget, is that what you have, is that what it's like?
Yep.
Uh, just one additional comment, and now that we've moved the election to November, uh, we're basically at least a month, if not a month and a half to two months, ahead of where we typically are, because the budget was adopted unanimously, and I, obviously, there's still an opportunity for some change, but I would assume that those changes would be minimal. So I think the message here is, let's start looking forward and looking at what teachers we need, prepare the postings, you know, so on the twenty-seventh of March, we can get them out, you know, let's have our principals and supervisors work together. Okay, Dan, when you get back from this morning break, uh, but my, my point is, I want to get out in front of this, so that we can get the best people in, and also on any of our capital projects and technology projects, if we can still get them done this summer, let's start getting the specs together and get moving on.
Well, I can tell you the Solover boiler will be difficult, uh, going out, even if we start in March, April, by the time you get your bid specs out, lead time, boilers are going to start rolling in in September, there's no way you're going to dismantle and put them, so, the boilers, but the other items, uh, Dennis and I have already explored, and we're trying to, we're going to make a push to do a lot of those things during the summer if we can.
Miss Backo?
I just wanted to add a couple comments, um, for logic, the reason that, um, we decided to put four sets of iPads in the middle school, high school, was it's by department. So one for the science, one for the language arts, et cetera, so that's why there's four in that building, those buildings, as opposed to the elementary school. And the teachers, I know, like, from the public's perspective, it might seem like a lot of staff, but we put four teachers in the high school to prepare for the full day, to start preparing for the full day senior, which was, where the logic was, for putting so many staff in the high school.
Um, now that we moved the elections to November, what do we do as far as voting for professional services? Do we still do those in April?
I'm going to still follow the same timeline, because they're required for the thirteen, fourteen school year. Uh, so, you'll see everything come up in May, for those, the services that we have, uh, don't have.
So we definitely change them?
No change.
You can't, you can't contract one a year anyways, for some.
But, well, the ones that we have, we've done already.
Okay.
So certain ones we've already done, the others will appear on a regular basis.
Lastly, discussion, but the final last thing, I, I attended the, uh, UES PTO meeting, February twenty-seventh, I saw something I, I really liked, the students were there, and they did a presentation for the parents on technology integration and how they will parent for the standardized test. And, and one of the math problems that they, they gave to the, the parents and the kids solve was, I, it was surprisingly difficult for that level, uh, and I don't think a lot of people were aware of the level of knowledge that these kids have to have at that grade level, and, and the technology they're using, so what I mentioned to Ms. Mar and Ms. Brady, um, is that I would like to have that presentation here at a board meeting, um, and there's many student types of presentations that we can do at board meetings, um, I, I certainly encourage. So if, if you would kindly get together with Ms. Mar and Ms. Brady, and we can bring that in, with the laptops, and, and the kids came out to the audience, and they showed them how to, how to manipulate the laptop and, and solve problems, I think that was, uh, very interesting, and I, I think people either had an understanding of how we do education in two thousand thirteen, uh, which was very enlightening, and I'd like to have that presentation here. Having said that, it's an oral discussion, I'd like to open it up for the public, if any questions or comments that may come before the board, now please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, um, Allison from Exeter, Dr. Wood Drive. I guess now that we know that what a budget's going to be, I've been asked to come here on behalf of the Eisenhower PTO. Uh, the big concern is, what are we doing if the redistricting is going to be for this coming September? Is anybody going to Solover, because it really affects our PTO, you know, with the potential to lose, you know, three board members?
Sure, um, Allison, good question, um, we did, uh, tonight, the, the, the redistricting committee did have some further discussion, um, and where we're at right now is, nothing's going to happen this, uh, September thirteenth, and what we're doing, you know, the, the main concern is the overcrowding in Eisenhower. And what we've agreed to, and what the administrations look at, is, um, kind of moving the borders around a little bit, so you can relieve some of that Eisenhower overcrowding to all of it, where there is some more room, so that's going to be worked out in, in detail to be forthcoming. There's some room in some other elementary schools, and that will, it, it's something we can do immediately, that, that's not cost prohibitive, and it doesn't have to include the opening of Solover at this point. Um, I think we're all in agreement that somewhere down the road in the future, Solover is going to, going to be needed. And we're going to, uh, as we progress with budgets, try to put more and more money into that, um, to get that school up, up to standards, and then we will be utilizing that facility as well.
Right, and, and I think everybody pretty much understands, you know, that's what's going to happen. You know, just keep in mind to, to keep the PTOs aware as early as possible, because like, our, our, um, elections are going to be, you know, we'll make the nominations tomorrow night, and then we'll do the elections next month. You know, then the concern is, now, Solover's not going to have a PTO budget, to move some of that Eisenhower PTO budget over to Solover, no, they, and, or whatever other school might be redistrict, you know.
Got you.
You know, so that they can plan accordingly, they don't, you know, plus, we don't want to have to lose a whole PTO committee or board, you know, for one school.
Right, and I think part of the thing, too, is board members attending the PTO meeting would be very helpful in that aspect, to get that information.
But for, so for this September, it's all. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Anyone else in the public, ma'am, please come up, state your name and address from the record.
Hi, Dylan Mortino, Eleventh Square Drive. Um, I have a question, I do understand that, um, the final exemptions for, are only applied to the seniors in the high school, and I know quite a few years ago, it did apply to the lowerclassmen, is there a way to bring that back to some of the lowerclassmen, especially the juniors who are AP students, honor students, that are not only taking AP finals, but SATs, and trying to get into colleges, and then have to take a final on top of all that, it can hurt some of their brains.
Dr. Alfonso, did you want to address that, so about final exemptions, that we extended the.
We discussed that with Mr. Brown, and, uh, I think it was a letter that was sent by another class man who had AP, and very eloquently wrote about these kind of exemptions, and Mr. Brown said at this particular point, he's not willing to change the policy at this particular point. He feels that these are our best students, and I agree with him that they should take the final exams, if they get exempt based on what the exemption is, that would be fine. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.